I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris, take the roll.
Hey, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Walsiger.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Brennaman and Jass are absent from the office.
All right, do we have any additions or motions on the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda set forth.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Walsiger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
And from the minutes from the two six meeting?
Make a motion to the thirty minutes from two six.
Walsiger.
Any discussion? Not will vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Walsiger. Bills for payment are in your packet. Any action on that?
Motion to approve those as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, well, we'll vote. Walsiger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right, public comment, anybody that's not here for any other thing special, you guys are here for something special. I don't see anybody else. We will move into applications, agreements, hearings, special event permit, presented by Downtown Hartford with the Farmers' Market. Okay, I'll make sure they know who we are.
Application.
Oh, you said that.
On behalf of Downtown Hartford Inc. So, you guys have the information up front of you, this year is going to be similar as last, a little bit of different, um, difference in your change of dates because we don't have, if we would have done the last Thursday of the month like we typically do, or no, the first Thursday.
First Thursday.
First Thursday.
Yeah, first Thursday.
We would have gone over Fourth of July, we know that that's not a good day to do it, and then another one of our dates, we don't have half of our volunteer staff that's not available. So, we're shifting forward a week, so it will be the last Thursday of the month, May through September. So, it's only one week shift, but I think that it will be, um, it will be fine. And we, we will, in this request, it is asking to close from Second Street all the way down to, um, no. It is only once a month again, I know, I know that.
You know, I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, we have a lot of requests to move it to, um, twice a month, and as it is right now, we just don't have enough people to make that happen. And so, we have been possibly recruiting some, some more interested parties, and we'll see how that shakes out over the year, but, um, maybe next year, we'll see. But for now, it's sticking to once a month.
What can we do to help you with that?
To, to move it to twice a month?
No, yeah, to help you recruit, is there anything that city can do to help you with that?
Unless you have a surplus of volunteers in your pocket, and you just hurry down the door to help out with it.
Typically, I don't have a surplus of volunteers. If we were to do it twice a month, how would that structure look? Would it be like, I mean, have you probably thought a lot, would it be like the first and third Thursday, would you do like a one Saturday a month, and how would you?
We would, well, so, a lot of our vendors that we work with also work a lot of other markets, and so, they're either in Falls Park Market, a lot of them do, um, Marin, and some do with the rain, some are in other communities.
Yep.
We actually just weren't working some Saturday, and a few vendors that are interested in coming down if, if it's just the once a month.
Yep.
Um, however, that doesn't mean that we can't have twenty, thirty volunteers that are only coming once a month, or, excuse me, um, vendors, but it's just alternating, you know, we could, we could still potentially do it twice a month if we had the support staff to make it happen.
Gotcha.
It's just, it's the setup, it's the takedown, it's the cleanup, we, we try really hard to make sure that the street is cleaner than when, when we set up, we want to make sure that it's not a burden on the business owners or, or public works or any of that. We want to, we want to keep it a, a positive event for the community, it's just.
We need people.
We need people.
Okay.
Um, um, any new ideas about different activities or things to host that night that, resource-wise or otherwise, you just haven't been able to do, anything like that?
Oh, you mean like, um, well, I, I feel like with sponsorship and with, um, um, we really improved things this last year by purchasing tables, and we purchased a canopy that we can now rent out to vendors. We'd like to purchase maybe a couple more canopies to rent out, because some of our vendors just don't have that protection, and it gets pretty hot on some of those days. In terms of the events, um, some of the activities that we have brought in are quite pricey, like the Six of Five Art Class, that was luck of the statistics that we agreed, I think, just for one day. So, some of those things we'd like to maybe do more, but it is a little cost prohibitive. We've only had one meeting, and so, we want to ensure that these dates are a go before we continue reaching out to any vendors or start booking food trucks or any of that. But we would like to try and expand some of our, our offerings as well. One of the, one of our, um, one of our things for businesses that come and say, hey, I'd like to have the information, because we want to keep it, um, we want to add value. And so, for like a chiropractor, someone to just set up a tent for information, you say, well, please provide at least a children's activity, so that it adds to the market rather than just having, you know, twenty information spots that, you know, that kind of takes away from what we're trying to promote. So, you know, if we can get more businesses that are interested in, you know, providing kids activities, we can expand it in that way too, just for more fun things for families.
Awesome. You know, it's, I.
We're open to suggestions though, if you've got some ideas you'd like us to implement.
I would say we probably hear as many from a council or from my standpoint, as many positive comments love that as anything we do, so.
Oh, I'd say as many positive comments as negative.
That's great.
We're open to criticism, so that would shake it up.
People really look forward to it all summer, and I think, um, there's ways to grow it or sustain it in a different way.
It'll be especially good, like if we work on that guy that owns the brewery, he's gonna make a beer for me.
You get that when you're done being a mayor.
Oh, is that how that works? I can't say when he wants to call it on the camera. He's giving me a potential name, I can't say it. So, all right, I see you have three questions on here, will the city please advertise the dates on the LED sign?
We are.
Done. Uh, can we bring a snowplow again for the snowplow, that's fine, right, Greg?
The kids loved that.
And I saw Drive By the other day when there were pushes, no, I was like, there's, there's a plow.
The adults also loved it, I, because I read that, like, section that day, and I, a lot of the adults went, can we do it?
Yeah, that's really, that's really a nice idea, that's really a nice idea. And for ride trash cans, no problem, right? We got root cans, we got all kinds.
Yeah.
So, those three extra halves were good. All right, anything else you guys? Yeah, guys that have gallons?
Make a motion to approve the special, special event application for Downtown Hartford Farmers' Market.
Second.
Any more discussion or comments? There are none, we'll vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Walsiger.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Keep working on those people. All right, we're two reports, Hartford Dairy Fire and Rescue, the report is in the packet. When did we decide, it's coming once a? It's like it's been a while.
Connor was here.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
In January, yeah.
I think we just brought it.
He can't, he replaced for, yeah.
Yep, sorry, yep. And economic development report, Amy Farz.
Yeah, most of my information's in the packet for you, I do want to touch on the vendor commercial partnership that we have with them for the North Oaks Industrial Park. They did provide a flyer for us last Friday to review, so it was sent off to the board members for some updates. Um, as soon as those corrections are made, they will list it on the website and have that readily available for interested parties to, um, possibly secure some land options. So, um, that is one of the main updates, otherwise, if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
What about the Kid Wilderland, are they gonna be listing that as well, I would imagine?
Yep, that'll, that's a work in process though, so, we're going through some wetland delineations on that and other things that are.
So, you have to have all those wetland, all of those things kind of figured out before you can actually list it, is that the caveat with this?
That's what they would like to do, so that you know what land is actually viable for.
Yeah, because I was on the, um, I was on the vendor web, you know, just checking up on it, and I presume they'll probably have it hopefully listed this week, or is that their goal?
That's the plan.
Okay. Just seems like it's been a while, but I know things take time, but it's like, there's a lot of land there, so let's.
Keel, listed.
Absolutely.
I want to go to the GeoED conference, is that something that, uh, I'd have to have these guys approve for, to pay for me to go? Because I think it's what, Amy, do you know? The GeoED conference?
It's April tenth and eleventh, one hundred and sixty-five, I believe, for both days.
Is it out of the pier?
No.
No, it's in Sioux Falls.
It's in Sioux Falls.
How are you doing?
Yeah, is that in the Senate Council?
All right, I do, but, shh, don't tell anybody. So, is that something, either I pay for it, or I?
City usually pays for it, but we'll get, I'll put it on the next agenda, so they'll just register you.
I would like to probably get to that.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Amy, any other questions for Amy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, our newly minted chamber director, Lynn. Well, not newly, this is your second, second time, man, you were almost, uh.
I'm almost a pro.
You're almost old bat.
Coming out of my rookie season, fired. My report is in the packet, uh, updates are, we had our annual banquet on Saturday, it was at the suburban lanes, it was, um, about fifty-seven, um, families or fifty-seven people in attendance. Uh, we gave our award to Burger Battle winner, which was, um.
Steakhouse.
Hartford Steakhouse Company, Skylar and Madison were there to receive that award. Congratulations to Travis Electric for winning the Business of the Year, and Michelle Shilling won Volunteer of the Year, so we awarded all those awards. I, I thought it was a good evening, I, I enjoyed myself, I got to know a lot more of the chamber members that aren't on the board or whatever, so it was, it was an enjoyable evening for myself. Upcoming, next is Discover Hartford, Hartford May sixth.
What is Discover Hartford, what is that again?
It is an opportunity for the community to get to know about Hartford itself, about businesses in Hartford, we'll be doing some scavenger hunts and some videos and some things like that, just to get the community involved. Hashtag Discover Hartford. I do know that there is, uh, they're having a showing for a big to-do for this building here, um, at the end that's for sale.
Oh, for that month?
Yeah, and that's in March, she's got some advertising coming out, that she wanted to share that, so she's trying to make that a big deal, the new real estate agent, so.
So, they're gonna let people walk in there and check it out?
I guess.
I'll be on that, that sounds fun.
It's gonna be a big thing, so, um.
We should go lose that.
My building.
A big brick building, yeah, Josh was, yep.
I think that's it. Any questions?
So, this is just a comment, we can talk about it at a later time, but the Chamber connection email needs to be blowing up and starting over.
Yes.
And I don't know how else to say it.
Can you say that a little bit more?
I, I don't.
Do I need more blunt?
I don't read it. I don't read it, so, yes, uh, the new one is coming out on probably Thursday.
So.
And I, I, in the, in the new one, I'm asking for, um, feedback, so I appreciate that, um, but also looking for contributors, so I'm looking for trivia, I'm looking for, um, quotes, I'm looking for, if you know of something that happened in the ne- area that I could share for the week, I would love that, so, um, y'all have my email, send me some tidbits about what's going on.
How often does that go on, is that a monthly?
Weekly.
It's weekly.
Weekly thing, okay, so, I gotta, I gotta become a chamber member again to get back on that.
Has been saying those to me members.
Who's a chamber member?
Yeah, to the chamber party.
Yeah.
Sydney, you could get signed up for it since you're with Sanford, we could add you to that email.
Sure, now I'd like to introduce our treasurer, um, Keith Miller.
That's why he's here.
I got roped into, uh, going up and down the court, now I have nine kids, so I apologize for sweating and for my attire, so, for being a few years late.
Playing basketball.
Yes.
That's right.
And coaching.
Awesome.
So, uh, as you mentioned, what'd you say?
Other coach.
Yeah, yeah, correct. Yeah, so as, as Lynn mentioned, I'm Keith Miller, um, I'm in my second year as treasurer with the Chamber, third year, um, as a board member. And so, today, just, uh, here to talk about, um, the twenty thousand dollars that we had came to, I believe it was at the, your guys' budget meeting, um, kind of talked a little bit about why, why we were asking for it, what that would be used for. Um, it's, it's a reduction of, from what we asked for in years prior, um, so just kind of recap, uh, these dollars go towards marketing events and along with the promotion of the city of Hartford as well as the businesses, um, within our, our chamber. And then, another point of those funds was to continue to work towards a goal of us being self-sufficient. So, I don't know if there was anything else that you wanted me to add, or if you guys had any questions?
I don't think so, I, well, I got a quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
I got two questions, sorry, I've been, I've been talking all day, but, um, well, I, 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 uh, I did add, you know, I didn't finish the sentence, so, um, self-sufficient, actually, as you're saying that, I wrote that down, just a quick question, because I love the golf event, and I know that it's probably the most expensive, right, maybe?
Well, it, it, we raised the price, um, and that was by me, um, I golfed in probably five or six of those, and, um, this is by, this was by far the cheapest one, I believe it was at three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
For a team, right?
Correct, we raised it to three seventy-five this year, um, we did have a few less teams, um, some unfortunate circumstances, um, otherwise, we kind of, we had a good showing. Um, and that, I think, that's one of the highlights of, of the events, as you said, with the, with the downtown events that they put on, so, but.
So, my, yeah, so, and I, because I love that event, and I think it's great, um, my question on that, so when you do an event like that, obviously, your main goal isn't to make money off of it. I mean, that's probably not the main goal, it's to get all the chamber members together and have fun and play golf. So, I think the biggest thing with that is, how can you get that to run more, I don't know if the word is profitable, but to where?
You're saying you'd like it to be less profitable?
No, yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to, I guess what I would, my encouragement would be to recruit more teams, so it's not, so it's not a huge money loser.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Which is great for everybody.
I think, did we have nineteen teams this year, I think we had twenty-four in the year prior.
I think we had nineteen this year, yep, and then on top of it, we added additional sponsorship levels.
Yep.
And some other sponsorship opportunities that didn't create such a deficit.
Great, yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah, if we could make it more like the Miley, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, that is crazy.
Might be more, I think, more marketing, um, obviously, will help, um, and so, yeah, it starts with, with all the chamber members and people who are part of it. You know, if you have anyone, any friends that have businesses that aren't a part of the Chamber, or are a part of the Chamber, that don't partake in that event, um, it'd be great to have more teams, it's nice not to be backed up on every goal.
That is true.
I mean, I'm all about making it bigger.
Yeah, yeah.
Looks like they were over on their budgeted revenue and under on their expenses for the event, so.
Yeah, yeah, and a part of that was because we, last minute, we had already had, I know, I, I was going to register, and I was like, Amy, I think this is too cheap, and so, we pivoted and moved it up. Because, yeah, three seventy-five, is it going to scare anyone away?
When you get five hundred, that's where I'm, yeah.
Yeah.
Cool, I did, yeah, cool.
Or, I mean, if you get full pork, five hundred isn't out of line.
With, you gotta have.
Or, I mean, there's, there's normally a cake there.
Yeah.
And sauce.
And that's sponsored by a wonderful Chamber member.
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so.
You start mixing that out.
I think my, my question was on the budget, and it's twenty thousand, and I know we could use a certain fund that.
Third penny sales tax.
Restricted anyway, so I'm not complaining about that, I do know, I did notice you have quite a bit, um.
Yeah, if you look at.
In money market and.
If you look at from year prior, we're, I mean, we're in a completely different position than where we were, um, hopefully, the, the next year, you know, the ask is, is less, you know, if, if we continue to do what we did this year, who knows, you know, who might not be your asking free, we, we just don't know. Uh, but that's why we felt like, hey, instead of just completely cutting it off, we reduce our ask, just in case. And when we made this ask, um, we also didn't know exactly what was happening with, with our Chamber Director position, um, we still feel like it's a, it's a reasonable ask, so.
And honestly, that's the kind of thing we have to spend that third penny on, right?
Yeah. We can ask for more.
No. I'll be as short as I were on, was on the news later, yeah.
Yeah.
I think if you can show the value, he doesn't have to vote.
Businesses in this community have shown time after time that they're always willing to give to a good cause, and, um, you know, if somebody suggests that they should increase the yearly cost of membership in the Chamber and win Business of the Year next year, then it's probably worth it.
We did, we did increase our dues as well, yes, so a lot of that is reflective of.
He's not a law, he's been on radiation too much lately.
Yeah, we haven't had any of our big expense events yet, and we pivoted something different with our annual Chamber event, which used to be a loss, um, and so, this year, I don't know if the final, if it was a, a moneymaker or a loss, and, but it's not going to be as big of a loss of what we did years prior. Um, we've heard some feedback that people, everyone wants it to be in, um, in, in Hartford, but, you know, we need a spot to have it in Hartford, we, uh, Great Life is a Chamber member, everyone that catered is a Chamber member, so everything was Chamber member, um, centered, but, um, but yeah, who knows, maybe next year we'll go to an annual event, um, like we did before, where it's a sit-down dinner, but.
I was just curious a little bit with the money, what you're holding in your money market, and, um, like, you have a pretty good, a pretty good balance sheet if you guys are working towards something, or?
Well, I mean, I think the, the plan, was it five years ago, was to be self-sufficient, and we're, we're not quite there, when we met six months ago, our balance sheet didn't look like this, and we were, um, we increased membership dues, you know, we cut off, uh, the event that normally costs us some money, um, but, so, it'll look a little bit different in a few months, and we start spending some money on, on all of our summer events, it's just kind of a, a, a time of year for us. Haven't had a lot of mixers, you know, haven't had a lot of mixers.
I would say, Sydney, by the time we get to budget in August, these guys will have different perspective, when they'll have some months on their belt.
I, I probably have less heartburn about the twenty thousand, I mean, obviously, supporting the director's salary was a big, a move too, but, um.
Right, yeah.
Just curious.
No, but I, I do think that the discussion has to keep rolling toward, when will we let these guys be at a point where we say, you're on your own? You know, that's the, that's the goal. So, I like the fact that they're, uh, I think Keith, Keith has done a great job of making prudent with their cash.
Keith, are you banking?
Someone said, hold on.
Somebody's putting. All right, we have any action on this, uh, proposal?
I make a motion to, um, approve the release of the twenty twenty-four budget allocation of twenty thousand dollars for the Hartford Area Chamber of Commerce.
All right.
I'll say again.
Any other discussion or questions? There are none, we'll vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Walsiger.
Yes.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you go back and play basketball.
Or take a shower.
Take a shower.
Yeah. All right, city engineer report, Mr. Michael.
Good evening, everyone, uh, my report is in your packet, uh, since last meeting, we reviewed a, a plan recommended approval on that, excuse me, uh, continue to review the design standards, subdivision ordinances and specifications, targeting March to review those with city staff, uh, and then present that to the planning and zoning board, ultimately you. Uh, and then lastly, met with the Windsor group earlier today, just to discuss their preliminary plan, uh, and their timeline, just to make sure it matches with the sewer project. Moving on to project updates, uh, Water Resource Recovery Facility, that one really is just walls to the lift station, or walls at the treatment site at this time, um, they're looking at forty-six different, they have forty-six different sections to do, um, and they're planning on two sections a week, call it, so it's a twenty-three week process. Apparently, they have eight done, so they're making progress, weather's helping, but it's just gonna take a little bit of time. Looking ahead at the operations building, uh, looking to do footings and foundations on that, um, March and April, if the weather holds, and then looking to get that, those precast walls erected by June. Continuing project updates on the website as well, link active, I think photos will be coming soon, um, last ones are from last month, but just continuing to keep that updated, um, if you guys have any comments on what you'd like to see there, happy to hear it. Moving on to the bike and wreck trail, that one, uh, we do have tentative approval from FEMA, just have to notify residents of the changes to the flood plain, which really is a no rise, um, but it's just part of their approval process, so before we can get that former approved and finalized, we just need to notify the residents. So, we're working with the city staff, and then we'll wrap up planning and put those on the shelf. And the last one is the Western Avenue Interchange Approach, uh, we did wrap up construction documents, specifications, and, uh, cost estimate, uh, and those have been submitted to the South Dakota Department of Transportation today for federal highway review. They did push the schedule back a little bit, so instead of bidding in June this year, uh, plans have been submitted for bidding in June, but the actual bid letting will not be till this fall.
Will that push the actual project into a different year?
No, the construction is already planned to start next spring, twenty twenty-five, so I think they're just pushing the bidding back, both either for additional review time, um, or for submitted stuff to save the due due to some time.
So, I was asked a question about, so that's going to be curb and gutter, sidewalk, street lights, all where on, so like, an approach into the plaza, where they have their own kind of frontage road, how does that work?
So, Dairy Queen is going to make, they're going to do driveway in the same spot, but then that is, that is what the access will be, or are you asking during construction?
Yeah, well, I'm just, no, I'm just curious of how that, so that ditch and everything, does that go away, or how does that work?
The low, the road is getting lowered slightly, so we're using some little spoils from the road to kind of fill the ditch, and then there will be storm sewer to convey.
And there's gonna be sidewalk?
Yep.
Yeah, there's gonna be sidewalk along there.
West side will have, uh, five-foot wide sidewalk, and then the east side will have a ten-foot wide trail.
Yeah.
Uh, DOT, as part of their interchange product, they have, they have the same setup, but the sidewalk on the west and a trail on the east.
I'm even in favor of it, but I'm glad to hear it.
I'm just curious how that, you know, because you put the storm sewer in there, you put sidewalks and curb and gutter, and we're going to three lines, so, kind of gonna be right up to their, what I would call their parking lot, right?
Yep.
That a.
I, I believe there's ten or fifteen feet between the edge of theirs, there.
Okay, and still.
And, and the.
Sidewalk.
Our curb and gutter, so the sidewalk can take a portion of that.
Okay.
I can get.
I'm just, I'm just curious, because somebody asked me, they said, well, when is this, you ever gonna put streetlights along there, and I said, hold your powder here, I will get the streetlights in there, but it's gonna be a while, so.
You ready to down track?
Hold your powder down.
Hold your powder dry.
Yeah.
Never heard of it.
We got a lot of them tonight.
Not you two.
All right, anything else you need to add on that?
That's all I had, no further.
Anybody else got any questions? Since the weather's been so nice, the sewer plant's gonna probably be ready by March.
I think, I think it's important to get those sidewalks out there, especially with all the multifamily housing. That we have and people walking, um, with the other businesses out there, so, I don't know how we, we have a lot to do.
Every street road project is a sidewalks across.
Yeah. Yep.
Or we're coming back, trying to get, say, across the school, and it's another.
Right. Yeah, we got to do them right now with the building. Right. Yeah, we got to do them right now with the building. Yeah, exactly. All right.
Is there a way when we're doing that, it's like last year we ran into it, trying to convince people sidewalks?
Sure.
And people are still saying no. Is there a way that we can?
Yep.
Make them?
There is. T did it, right? Where they pretty much.
Because it's included in the project.
It's probably where we ran into last year was, we want to put sidewalk on their property.
Yeah.
To be having it right away. We can put them in right away and, and assess them, yeah.
And yeah.
They're right. T mandated it a few years ago.
But it's just.
When you're going onto their property and, uh, I have, we've talked some about my addition, and these guys did a great nap and I got it. And I've made some notes and there's some stuff we're going to talk about, but some of the areas that we've got marked where there's no sidewalks, the biggest problem is there's going to be, have to be a half dozen old growth trees some of these places. I mean, you're going to have to weigh, what do you want to do? If we're going to put sidewalks in, there's going to have, something else is going to have to go in some of those areas. But I agree, I mean, but.
Which things too.
Yeah.
Things they can look at. I mean, quite a few years ago, the city did a program where we gave a rebate if people would put in sidewalks on their own. We like, I think it came out to about fifty percent of it we paid for, you know?
Right.
I mean, there are different things.
Yep. I agree.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
We'll move to Mr. Craig. He's got a lot of stuff to say.
Well, most of, like you said in the, in the report, everything's pretty much the same. A couple of changes. Uh, Jim did pass his wastewater collection, uh, class one. I just got the results back today of that, so he's passed that, so we'll keep him moving on other tests and exams. Um, and the parts for the slide, the pool are done, so we'll be starting to put that together here these nice days, so. Got, we wanted to let the paint cure for another week before we start really mucking with it, so once the weather stays, next week we'll probably get started on that. That's all I really had in my report. Any questions beyond that?
Think so. While I was out cam, I see my lord, um, the streetlights came up. At the end of the Central Valley driveway, there used to be a yard light there in that general area, I think maybe it was at the end of the, of the, um, townhouses. And apparently it had gone out, burned out, and one of the homeowners in the sixplex acquired with Sue Valley about replacing it, and they just instead cut it off. And I assume, like I told her, I said, I think that was probably due to that some private property, probably being paid for by Great Life. And they said, we don't need it. We've got their brand new parking lot lights.
I'm sure that's what they call it, but it might have been private.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the second location was at the end of the Colton Road and Highway thirty-eight where the bike trail is. There's a street light across the way, but in the morning, that, that is extremely dark where pedestrians might actually be. So while it's across the way, it doesn't afford any safety for those folks that are on the bike trail.
That's, I'd probably have to talk to DOT or county on that, so I can certainly look at it and see.
You talked about those two, the Colton Road, two bike trails.
Bike trails.
Down on each side.
Bike trail. Cross the Colton Road, but if you're coming down that in the morning.
Yep.
So somewhat the light across the way distracts your attention away from being able to see those pedestrians, and so they're, if there was a light on, on one or both sides, both sides might be a bit much, but at least on one side, uh, it would afford more
Visibility.
Visibility for those folks that are using that bike trail.
Definitely.
I can check with the DOT on that. It's more likely it's going to be the right way, because they're going to have that, I think, one hundred and twenty foot in there.
Yeah.
So it'd be, it'd have to be in the right way, so I can check, I can check with them guys and see if there's any possibility of getting something in there.
I think those are the only, yeah, those are the only two things that I can think of.
All right. Do you have an action item in here from your tractor mower? You want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so we put numbers together, um, Kubota, Case, New Holland and John Deere. We specked them all out. Uh, the only difference was that Case's, that seventy-five A, that, that seventy-one thousand, that was a three cylinder. Uh, a little bit less horsepower, um, than the other ones. So the guys went today and they test drove, we threw the John Deere out, they test drove the New Holland, the Kubota, the Case. They test drove the seventy-five C case, which, uh, on Sourcewell would have came over eighty-one thousand. So we kind of threw that out. Um, the guys thought the New Holland was a really nice, uh, mower, uh, tractor mower. Um, and actually New Holland and Case are kind of together. Um, after they did that, and that would have been my recommendation is go to New Holland. I found out today that Case has got, uh, that seventy-five A, they, that three cylinder one, they didn't have that in, but supposedly it's coming overseas and should be here in a couple of weeks, which most of the tractors aren't made overseas, now they just carry the parts here. But I think if, if the seventy-five A with a three cylinder, if New Holland had a three cylinder, there'd be less yet. So like I said earlier today, my recommendation was the New Holland's that went for the seventy-three thousand, seventy-five dollars, that's with mower and the sickle, or the sickle and the tractor. But I can certainly look into a little bit more on that, that three cylinder and see if Case and New Holland both have it, so.
Well, two things. We want you to have what is going to work for your guys, but also we want to be prudent with the money, so. If a couple of weeks to take a look at that.
Yep.
I mean, you're not going to start mowing and.
No, it'll be sometime.
Unless the weather stays the way it is.
So, yeah, I can certainly, and the other thing is with Case that the guys told me today when they're there, um, their, their mower, they didn't know how far out it would be to get a mower built or where they could find that, so that's another thing we had, we had to solve. Definitely we can put this on hold. Um, I'll do a little more, I'll get involved myself a little more on that seventy-five A and then also New Holland, see what they've got for a three cylinder and see what the good, bad is with it. Uh, they did, Case did say that the overall retail value would be better on that four cylinder than the three cylinder. Um, but as far as horsepower, they're pretty similar, a few horsepower different to them, but. I'll do some more checking, plus I want to check on availability of that mower. If it's six months, eight months out, then it doesn't do us any advantage.
Kind of saying.
Right.
So I definitely am fine putting this on hold.
Couple of weeks or.
Yeah, it'll probably be a four, it'll probably be the second, not this next meeting, but the meeting after, because I'm going to be on vacation that meeting, so.
Got to use it either. All right?
So.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
And that's all I had, so.
We don't need to take any action because we really didn't ask it, right? Despite the money, so we're not.
We do have action, we'll put it on the future agenda.
Yep. All right. Any questions for Craig?
I've got a lot, a lot of questions, but I'll, I'll wait till it's on the back on the agenda. I just, I think, um, there was obviously quite a bit of discussion during budget time about this. What's the, it's a lot of money. I understand the city has needs. We have to take care of what we have. So what's the selling point? I guess the, the, how do we justify the cost? Because in my mind, it's a lot of money, right? So when I look at a profit like something like that, I'm like, you know, that, that's a little bit harder. Like, I have to really comprehend that and, and be able to explain to my constituents of why we're spending eighty thousand. And so I know we, I know that we think we need it, but do we actually need it? It's kind of my, my question.
Yeah, um, so the mower we've got now, it does have a sickle on it, but it's.
The sickle is like the.
It hangs off the side, so, so like this type of mower, uh, you'll be able to run the, uh, bags and that stuff with the creek. And they'll reach out there and get that mower up, keep it clean instead of weed whipping it all. Um, plus with the lagoons or the sewer plant, we'll have to be mowing out there. Um, meantime with the lagoons, it would be easy out there and all that, uh, some road ditches that we.
Because like that tractor with the sickle, that's like an old tractor, right? I'm trying to picture.
An old one is, yeah, it's like a seventies or something.
And so you'd have an issue, you'd have an issue driving it out there probably, right? I mean.
I don't think you're going to go that far with it.
We had, we had a pretty extensive discussion, I think, at budget time, and we put in there about why.
I understand that, and I, and I was pretty much, I think I voted no on this subject, so I know it was extensive and I.
I would just say, Craig, make sure you pick what engine you want.
I agree.
Because it's going to be yours for a long time. Get what you want.
Yeah, we're only using it during mowing season. It's an eighty thousand dollar piece of equipment, so it'd be nice, and I, I don't know anything about equipment, so I'm coming.
But volunteers are hard to come by, especially to run a weed whacker.
It's going to have a loader on it, so like going out to the fields, if we have to bring agri line mower there. Right now, we throw a bit in back of the gator, bring it out there and shovel it in, because you can't bring a skid steer out in that good grass, you'll tear it all up.
Yeah, you probably can't use it to mow out there with big tires and stuff, I would imagine.
This, you'd be able to drive out to the, um, agri line to the fields and dump it without doing damage to anything else.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be using it for that too, so that was, at first I thought about eliminating the bucket on it, and then I got more, we got talking about it, it's like, yeah, we should probably really keep the bucket on it, so.
Yep, okay.
If you, if you approach it from a, a business that's like, yeah, it's eighty thousand dollars, but it's, it's also not fifty years old. And so the safety features, I got to believe that are on this new piece of equipment. In the event something should happen, um, there's probably a lot, there's probably, there's probably a whole lot more liability sticking somebody on a fifty-year-old, a piece of frame than they do on.
And it should increase your production or your.
Well, it should, yeah.
So you're saving on labor of people weed whacking and.
Versus this.
Yep.
And you can actually, I know I had a point at least twice about some of the areas where we're not getting down. Along the, along the creek and the other drainage area that we're somehow responsible for between houses. People don't like those growing up behind their houses on city property, when you guys explain why we have weeds that height and they can't.
And even though we're still might, might not get into there even with this tractor, because if it's wet, it's wet. You're set to go back there and weed whack.
Zone's different. Different zone, you can have color weeds if you have different zones.
That is true. That is true.
It's all different.
All right. Sean in.
I'm good, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Karen is out. She had a death in her family, and Teresa put in her update, this is her mother-in-law.
Her mother-in-law, yep.
So we give her condolences, and I think you guys probably took care of some of the positive here. And her information's in here.
She'll be back in the office on Friday.
All right, then we will move forward to your report, Teresa.
Of course, on the packet, not too much for updates. Um, just want to point out, you know, we had a full pay giving life insurance. I did meet with that rep on Friday, so we've got that ball rolling. So, um, looks like April first, we can get that effective and, and going here for the, um, staff. Um, they're also going to offer, they have another policy we're kind of competing back on it. The city would pay for that ten thousand like we agreed upon. And if any of the staff wants to get additional seventy-five thousand, they can get that as a guarantee. So that's something we'll talk about, we have a staff meeting to talk about, and then they can go for that, but that's all in the works. Um, I have got a message in to Greg Olson. We're trying to find a, a date to meet to kind of talk about the sponsorship and what kind of signage they want, like we're talking about. So we haven't landed on a date yet. As soon as we do, we'll meet and discuss that and kind of keep you updated on that. Um, and just really the other thing, I just want to let you know, the, the District Three meeting this year unfortunately falls on a council meeting date, so, unless you guys want to move a council meeting, we'll, you know, we'll be able to go there. Um, at the district meeting, what they do is the states divide up into like nine districts and so our, our kind of section of it, basically, they give you a, a mail and some, some, one of the cities hosted, they give you a mail. Uh, the good thing about it, they kind of give you a legislative update, and this is after the legislative sessions, kind of tells you how it's affected, what changes have made that affect the cities or whatnot. But they always send out a, an email about that as well, so I mean, we'll get the information, just let you know that, so. I really don't have too much. Can I ask what Karen has questions?
I appreciate the email you sent out with, uh, the municipality.
Every week they're keeping us updated.
Good information.
Um, they are watching that Senate bill to the one that, um.
I've heard, I've heard both sides of that from people. Well, I have two, uh, going out, getting signatures, what's going on with this gas line, what carpet.
Yeah.
Pay attention, pay attention, what's happening in here.
So we'll try to keep you updated on that as well.
It, I can, I know that there, it's going to get contentious when it gets to the House from everything that Senator Hoffman told me. They, they don't think that the House is going to pass it, but maybe they'll come up with some sort of wording and have to have a compromise. I got to believe at some point that
I ran into.
Harder time stopping this thing, but.
I ran into Scott Anderson with the county planning and zoning, and they're watching this as well, fully too, because it's really going to affect a lot in the county, because that's where a lot of pipelines are running, so they're not in favor either of, uh, the state kind of taking over jurisdiction. As far as it goes for that, so.
All right. Any questions for Teresa? There are none. We'll keep moving forward. Next on the old business, mayoral appointment for the park and rec board. I would like approval by the council to appoint Tim Weber to the park and rec board for, those are two or three, three.
Three year.
Three-year terms. TM, if you don't know, is a local West Central kid, uh, works at Reliabank, helps with the wrestling program. Lives in what I call the balloon house, you know, the one that they lifted up and put the thing under and had balloons on top of the place, so.
Motion to approve the appointment of Tim Weber to the park and rec board.
Second. Any discussion? If not, well, Waslawger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen. And you, and you'll get in touch with them, Teresa?
Yep.
All right. New business. We have, my name is Undernew, review, approve the surplus list.
We approve the surplus list as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are we going to replace America? That America is wrong. That's a smart, you guys.
It's been replaced.
It is.
It's been replaced?
Last year, last fall.
Yep.
Okay, all righty.
We're on top of it.
Okay.
We've got to be able to.
It looks just like the other one.
Does it really?
With an old school one.
Oh, you did. That, that, that one's wrong. I mean, they're both.
No, this one's.
All right.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Why is it that tea?
Oh, yeah.
Somebody will buy it. Some, some, some old collector will throw that in.
No, we're throwing it.
We're throwing it.
It doesn't, there's a lot of liability. Insurance won't.
It's been welded up so many times.
I, I, my kids, I'm sure, wore some of that out.
If you've ever been by the park when there's ten kids on that big bounce and it turned it, I always thought, how is that thing standing together? All right. There are no discussion. We'll vote. Waslawger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right, next up, review, discuss the payroll manual, right?
Our personnel manual.
Basically our employee.
Personnel.
Manual. So, you know, we contracted with the Weston Group, which is an HR service, to review our current manual and then, um, suggest any changes or additions to it, so. I just want to review it kind of tonight instead of vote on it, because it's a lot of information on there. Um, I have looked through it all and, um, read it a few times. Um, it basically incorporates what we currently have into our payroll manual, so it's personnel slash payroll manual. Um, it has the same contents, like I says, we currently have as far as, you know, benefits and regulations or whatnot. But the Weston Group really kind of beefed it up and added quite a few additional sections to it. I kind of gave you, um, a breakdown of what, went through each section, what they added, what they kept the saying, what they kind of changed wording on a little bit, and there's about four or five sections. Um, I've shown and read that. I, I want to just have some discussion on that they've added, that do we want, do we not want, do we want change or whatnot, so. I'd like to go through them first, and then if you guys have any questions about any other parts that you think we need to take a look at. For the most part, what they added, I think, is good additions, but like I said, I just have some questions on the ones that I have and read.
All right.
So we go through them, so section one, to me, looks all fine. They added a few things. Um, I don't have any issues of what they added there. Section two, though, kind of the first section they have is, um, confidentiality. Um, that section basically talks about, um, having an employee sign a confidentiality agreement. We currently don't do that. Um, not to say we can't, I don't think it's probably not a bad idea. There is some state statutes out there that that were under that make information that we get here through the city confidential, but having them sign a confidentiality agreement just might kind of beef that up. So I want to basically, your input on that, yes, no, um, just kind of want some discussion on.
I would say definitely not for, in my opinion.
I would say definitely not for, in my opinion, for seasonal part-time labor, labor in my opinion.
Yeah, cause that's it, now we gotta define who who signs them off.
So right now, it's just you and Karen are, well, no, you're not.
That's on the back of the check, that's the next section, yep, that's.
I just, you know, it's kind of closed home for me, so when I see the title of the paragraph and then I read the paragraph, it doesn't really talk about one single little thing about compliance, so I'm not sure why it says that, but then also, like, we're not subject to HIPAA as the city, so I'm also not sure about that.
This is a section under by the Western Group.
I I think you should ask them to take another look at that specific too.
Would it would it be more along the lines of, I know so-and-so lives at such and such and this is their phone number?
It's not HIPAA.
No, no, it's confidentiality though.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so back to the confidentiality agreement. What you're saying, Cindy, is to look at.
This doesn't make sense, and we're, it says we're gonna train our employees on HIPAA, privacy and security.
Anyway. That does not pertain to us.
We're not gonna do that, so that needs to be fixed for a city.
So you're recommending carve that down, look more just at the confidentiality piece?
I think if the Western Group ought to scope it to city, not just.
Not corporate.
Yeah, a lot of it, it it comes, it's more like you're looking at a business versus a municipality.
Correct. Right.
Well, I mean, I think they start off by telling you we're gonna do something we know we're not gonna do. That that is a compliance program conducting internal auditing and monitoring, we you don't have any of that.
I mean, there's a lot in here, like weapons in a workplace, like here's the thing, we live in a, you know, we live in a state where we like our guns. Um, you know, I I have no issue with the city employee carrying a gun in order to protect themselves, so like that, like I I wouldn't vote that if somebody felt comfortable concealed carrying a weapon in a state that's very pro second amendment, I would never force, like if I owned a business, I would never put that in play, I mean, so like, I mean, there there there's a lot on, I mean. I I I look at this and I'm like, I probably have to go through this a lot more thorough than what I did, because I don't wanna agree to something.
I'm in the same boat, I mean.
Well, that's why I just wanna review and have some discussion, that's why I didn't want any action on this.
Okay, that's it, yeah.
I I have no action on this tonight.
Would it be appropriate to have confidentiality agreements assigned by management employees, would that get Craig? And Amy and when?
I think if we're gonna have confidentiality agreements signed, I think all whole-time people should probably sign it, because Rhonda has access to everybody's address, there's social security numbers, there's whatnot, so does Jenny, she has access to that and um, we, like I said, there is a South Dakota state statute, we have passed the red flag rules, which basically say we can't give out that information, so we don't. So like I said, we are covered about under some state stuff, so is this a little extra level, I don't know.
A mint for this to be done, but that's what this should say, it should say, you know, that employees will maintain confidentiality requirements as required in.
Whatever state law that is.
And that's what they should be signing.
And then I got a question, I mean, I'm asking other questions, okay, Mayor? Is this down the road away, down? Oh, are we still in section two?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I will, I I realize I've been skipping, this is how I look at it. You went right to guns and I don't even know where that's at, so. Yeah, I must've went way down, sorry, um. That's alright.
No, it's one of the areas she looked at, but.
Yeah, the solicitation, uh solicitation and distribution, um, so you gave an example on here, so.
It's okay, we take each section at a time.
Are we in section two though, right? Are we in section one?
Uh, it's confidentiality, so does anybody have any more input on that? I just wanted, just so I have clear notes. Yeah, and I I'm sure, seriously, I totally agree, so I I think this should be rechecked.
I don't wanna write it, I'm not an expert about the laws the city has to comply with for its employees, but I'm happy to give some input if they need it.
Okay, so we'll look at rewriting that section.
Okay.
Okay. So then the next section is about background checks, and that's, we said, we we don't do them now, we um me and Karen are bonded and part of the bonding processes, we've had background checks done on us. Is this something we want to do for when we hire people?
Yes.
You know, we see there is a
Yes.
House associate, so, okay, that's why I wanted.
It's not a large cost, but I remember.
I I think it's somewhere between fifteen and a hundred, depending on what company, it's it's not a lot.
You can go like fifty states and, but I mean, I think I checked all the boxes one time, it was like a hundred and sixty bucks, but most of the time, it's around eighty.
Okay, that's what I was, when I looked online, that's what I kind of looked at.
Are you talking about for all employees?
So then that's the question, is it just all full-time year-round, or, so you want them all for even the seasonal and part-time?
Or the park coordinator, high school kid.
High school kid.
For sure, like if they're gonna be driving.
And we hire them every year, so we, you know, hire additional twenty people.
So here's, I'll give you an example, for whatever reason, whether it be this guy, if he's well, Google, doesn't doesn't come up. Somebody mentions to me, gosh, that guy's name sounds really familiar, did you do a background check on him? No, I didn't. Well, what came to this robbery out in Rapid City? Soon as I added like robbery.
Rabbit, rabbit, oh, rabbit.
Rapid City. Oh, yeah, you guys are tired. And so while our best, you know, it was it was well done, it was well in the past, but I would have utilized that employee in a different role. So those little things can come up, now with a minor, I guess, I don't know all the rules for background checks.
I I think you have to have their parents sign off on.
That's that's a little different, but. I was thinking like anytime someone could enter a person's home specifically, now those employees are the ones I would be most concerned about.
Public works.
Yeah, the part-time guys would never.
Right.
Go in.
Whether Tom can help us then or the contractor, but there'll be some you know, um workaround getting consent for the background check and all of that, that will impact the hiring.
Yeah, there's gonna have to be a
So that'll be a little bit more slowed down, I would say, is mine.
A little bit more time to bring somebody on board. The only.
It will, it will.
But you know, if you have a part-time seasonal guy or whatever, usually they're high school kids, but I guess you'd wanna know if they had DUIs, but I suppose you take their driver's license, you have to submit that to insurance.
We do motor vehicle checks.
You do, okay.
Anybody that drives a a city vehicle, so we do that every year.
Okay.
So we we find out that information, cause that's needed for insurance, why not? So yeah, so the question, yeah, I I don't disagree that background checks aren't probably a good thing to do. My question, I guess there is, do we do them for our part-time seasonal people? And 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 you, I know you're thinking, yes.
I think you'd want them at the pool, you got, you got.
I'm just saying, absolutely. Sure, I mean, relatively speaking, that's probably the best eighty bucks you could spend.
I think, yeah, that'll be a process too, to just figure out what we get and what the cost is and how extensive it is, there'll probably be different options. Cause they'll be federal, they'll be state, they'll be.
And I could check with Tom about the regulations with minors, because like you said, most of our seasonal are high school kids, minors and whatnot, so.
Sounds like a rich agreement, it's a good idea, but we don't get a lot of.
Yeah.
Just need to know what a little more specifics are.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and then the same type of theater, we get to solicitation and distribution.
Oh, yeah, so we're in that one, okay.
So this is.
I'm jumping all over here.
Yeah. So this one is if they wanted to, um, if they gotta sign business and wanted to hand out flyers and propaganda about something. Or it does say, if you're asking somebody to contribute to another entity, so mainly my mind went to hey, somebody's kid comes in there and sells Girl Scout cookies, you know, or contribute to that, or they're selling for a band trip or whatnot, and and we've all had that done, and I don't think we've had any issues or problems with it. But this would restrict it, so they can't do that, that we couldn't have anybody in here soliciting to the employees.
Now, if the employee's kid, if employee's kid shows up selling Girl Scout cookies and just on their own because they're familiar with the people working here, that's a different, I'd say that's different.
I don't think we've ever had just a kid coming by themselves without their parent.
I I would agree, but given that scenario, an employee couldn't solicit, but if they, if the kid showed up.
Yeah, that's, that's different.
I mean, I'm just trying to think, like.
So, yeah, it's our, just, I don't want these discussions.
You know, we kind of, it's not a fun thing sometimes, but honestly, we find mostly people like it because it's a hassle if you have a stream of, or there's pressure to buy, you know, or there's whatever, so. I don't think it's the worst thing, it's not like there's fifty people in here they're missing out on, they can ask you all afterward. That's mine, Theresa.
So you need someone once in a while.
You know what you gotta learn to say, yo.
They make it to mine, I don't know why they can't make it to yours.
Yeah, so, so kind of in a group.
Relationships at work, people are dressed, yeah. The romantic relationships at work, I'm glad that's been addressed.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, maybe I'm a, maybe I'm an island on the solicitation industry, but I don't see a problem with it.
I, I would prefer not to have it in there, but I'm not gonna die on that hill, also, I just, I'm not gonna die on that hill with that one.
Well, I think, a recommendation from you guys too, you're the ones in the office dealing with it, so. You don't have to do give it right now, but.
We don't get a lot of solicitation, I I don't see it being a problem, like you said, you know.
And it would be the employee, not
Right.
Someone else.
Right, so, I I don't think it's gonna make or break anything one way or the other, so if we have it in there, then then it does take some of the pressure off of, you know, we feel like we gotta buy from our co, or you know, coworkers' kids, so. I I I'm with you too, I think it might stay in there. Um, section three, here's our, they got a little thing about weapons and there's another section that addresses it, but basically, they're saying, you know, in this one is, you know, things that could be termination, and one of them talks about weapons, and then like I said, later on, it talks about basically, they're suggesting no weapons at all in city-owned property, in the buildings, in vehicles. This, yeah, definitely needs to be a discussion, cause we're talking, you know, guys have pocket knives, I carry mace. I don't have those weapons.
Anything, yeah, I mean, I look at that and.
Sometimes you'll have a shotgun in your truck because you were on.
Yeah, like, we live in South Dakota, we live in a concealed carry, we actually open carry state, like I, you know.
I used to bring fricking shotgun to school, bring an NS out and put it in my locker.
Oh, my. I, so I'll just get my opinion out there, this is not a reflection of my personal opinion or my views about concealed carry. I think it's a terrible idea to allow weapons, maybe with some exceptions, into the workplace, just because of liability and fifty million other reasons, so I would be more in favor of saying, with the exception of firearms and pocket knives or all-purpose tools with a blade less than.
Yeah, see now, but here's the thing, let's look back at what happened to Sue Steele.
I don't know what happened to Sue Steele.
So Sue Steele, about four or five years ago, had a vendor that came in and shot at the workplace. And so, you know, like, we we have to, the people that work, that are employees, you know, I think that by stripping away their constitutional right to defend themselves and to carry and to to carry a weapon wherever they go, is, you know, I I look at that, like if I were to vote to get rid of that, now I'm in, I I I'm convicted and I'm convinced that I am taking away one of their rights, but I respect what you're saying though, too, I I get that, I mean, and you.
I'm I'm not an attorney, but it says, to the extent permitted by law, employees and their and visitors are prohibited from carrying weapons onto city premises. So I think to the extent permitted by law is what maybe means the interpretation. So, Tom, can you give us some hypotheticals on what that means? So what, so by law, we're permitted to carry.
You walk down the street with your HR, if you choose to do that.
Right, it's a little unnerving, but it's your right. So, that's gonna be, that'd be clarification for sure.
You got guys with the handgun in their back of their waist at the shop and accidentally shoot somebody at work or something else happens, I don't think that's a good scenario for the city.
Is that a work complaint at that point?
My thoughts was, I I know we're in the wacky world now, and I've never carried one, you know, ever, you know, I've got them, everything like that. My thought is, I would hate to see somebody, cause I know somebody that worked in the school district all the time, had a gun in his trunk of his car and got fired for it.
Right.
That's what I'd hate to see, I'm not sure if Amy carries or not, if she's got one in her vehicle, my daughter carries a pistol in her vehicle all the time.
Yep.
Uh, I'd hate to see.
We we are a family who does, I don't think.
I'd hate to see somebody lose their job because they had a shotgun or something like that.
Hundred percent. Hundred percent.
I don't disagree with that, no.
But let's, they just have to be aware to the part about taking it to school, during hunting season, I wouldn't park on school property.
Right.
They just gotta keep it off.
It's just all being more conscious about where you're at.
But you can have it in your personal vehicle. Yeah, but 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 here's the thing, yes, you can have it in your personal vehicle, but we don't need, I I don't think we have to restrict them, if those guy, you know, if they if they wanna pull their truck up in front of the city, now they're on city property, now the guy who's got a shotgun in there can be fired, like.
So we don't park on a city property.
Well, I don't think it says we have to fire them, I think it says.
Maybe, yeah.
I think it's prohibited, and I I don't think it's a great idea to have some guy on a mower with his gun stuck in his holster driving around town, I think it's perception and I think it's work time and I do a lot of things that I can't do at work, so.
There's been some times in our situations where final feel comfortable, I get a hold of the deputy. Have him come over with me, good job.
Okay, we call the deputy in the city hall.
Concealed carry then, right, but I feel like within the workplace, there's and if they are allowed, then I think we should have some type of firearms training or emergency response or you don't know the person that has it even has it legally. Just my, again, my thoughts, I think I'll probably, I'm sure we can come to consensus on.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it to prohibit them from carrying a pocket knife or pepper spray or things of that nature.
Yep.
The guys may have tools that, you know, have a blade on them, a multi-purpose tool or something like that, we'll have one.
Eric can talk, once again, with Tom, maybe see if we can reword it a little bit, then we can talk it over again, so, that that's why, yeah, I just find these discussions with. Then, next section, so drug and alcohol testing, that one. Um, it's got the same verbiage as we currently have, one thing I do wanna talk about, and it's not in our current manual, I don't know if it needs to be in this one, but um, the drug and alcohol testing, just how often we do it, cause right now, we are doing it quarterly. And the guys are, they got CDLs and that's required to do it quarterly, but they're part of a larger pool, they're in with a CDL pool, which has other towns and businesses, so they only get pulled for a drug test once a year, maybe twice a year, we get unlucky, you're lucky, whichever, however you wanna look at it. But the office personnel in here, it is just us, and so we've got so few people. We got people that go two times, or sometimes, if you're really lucky, we've got people go three times and roll three times a year. Um, do we wanna have the office going quarterly?
I don't know, whether we have to do it at all.
I don't, yeah, I would rather see it, I actually agree with you because.
And that's what I said, we have for drug testing, obviously, we do pre-employment and if there's an accident, we do. But it says we can do random anytime when there's a suspicion, I mean, so it's not like.
And save that money and use it on background checking.
Yeah, we spend almost ninety bucks, I think, on it and whatnot.
It's like a win-win.
Um, they're going to have to.
Yeah.
With the CDLs.
But unless otherwise required.
I mean, I don't know, how, we, everybody in the office knows the people that's out for very well, cause we're there so often, you know.
That's crazy, I think that's stupid.
We've never had a family.
I've never once taken a random drug test in my life. In thirty-seven years.
Like I said, and it is in our area, which I think we keep it in there, then we can pull them for random if there's suspicion, so I mean, obviously, we keep that in there if we like somebody.
Yeah, they can select for the not so random tests.
I mean, or just, you can leave it in there and we can choose to.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Do it one year or something, but.
Yeah, so we're pre-employment post-accident as well and under suspicion.
Yep.
My my bigger question would be, it's seen here where they address, we, under the influence, so you can be impaired, so if they have a medical marijuana card per se, now that random drug test is gonna come back that they are under the influence, but are they impaired, and so does that, is that addressed in here anyway?
So, when when that got passed, I talked with our attorney about that, so it's gonna be treated, so it's it's like a prescription medication, just like if you were taking prescription painkillers or whatnot. As long as it doesn't impair your performance, you're fine, but if you're taking it to the point that now you're a safety hazard or whatnot, here it, like I said, it's gonna be treated just like any prescription drug.
So that, we do have another job.
Yep, we do have that.
Alright, alright, very good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we we addressed that when this whole thing came about with the medical kind of mess, so.
Alright.
So the consensus is we don't do any random on the office, or are we, or we do it down to once a year, try, I I what? I don't, what's the consensus?
My suggestion.
I don't think we need to do it.
Unless it's not required.
I like the idea, if somebody comes into the workplace and they're smelling all over or something, if there's something that happens.
Language that means.
You know, but I really don't like submitting people to those things unless if there's a very valid reason.
Well, and it takes away from the workday as well. I mean, we gotta send them into Sioux Falls. They gotta sit there and wait for, you know, to do their test.
Now, if they go on vacation to Jamaica, I want this to be, they want vacation to Jamaica. Where'd you get back?
There's random drug tests for everybody that attends. They're just not.
I should tell that to people at work.
No, we don't want.
Send them to.
No, I think, I think our policy saw those, yeah, it was kind of a fringe hypothetical.
All right, what else you got?
The only thing was just, we already have the weapons discussion, so what I think I'll do is, some of these things, we'll try and reword them. I'll kinda talk with Tom a little bit. Maybe come back next month or something. If you guys, you know, look through the manual, and we get time a little bit more, if you see anything else that you question about, you know, definitely shoot it to me, so we can kinda look at it, and we'll keep moving ahead with it, so.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have for that.
All right. Thank you. All right, last stop, under new business, review, approve, representation for IT service.
So, we have got nine quotes, and I've kinda wrote them down to a spreadsheet for you. All the items on the left are things that, services that I wanted to look forward for IT to provide to us. Right now, we've got, we had, I should say, very cheap IT services. But we only had like nine of our computers covered. We didn't have this console once. He helped us with them regardless. They weren't on contract, whatnot. You can have any other company just do that now. They, though, we don't have any like twenty-four-seven monitoring currently, which I think we should, with the world we live in now. This is beginning to be a big thing, is all the smallwares, spam. I think we should be more proactive versus reactive. So, I did want them to all have some kind of twenty-four-seven monitoring there, so we can, we right now do, you know, off-site cloud backup. That needs to continue. Basically, you know, we don't have any IT people here. So, basically, I need them to be able to, if there's an issue with any of our computers, be able to handle it, be able to help us with purchasing new hardware, software, be able to work with our third vendor computer programs, like our water sewer building program, or accounting. Anyway, so, basically, it's all encompassing. And like I said, a disk spreadsheet, I made sure if they wasn't specified in their quote to me, I called to make sure, is this covered, is this not covered? So, we were comparing apples to apples. And on the bottom end, red, that's basically what it comes down, per month cost to us. Advanced tech was the cheapest. I'm not familiar with their company. I did check their references. They had good references, so I mean, you know, very comfortable with them. The one, though, I am recommending is A and B IT Solutions. They are, we have an established relationship with them, and I do know what work they do, and we have all our, we have our contract, we lease all our printers from them and our copier. So, you know, when there's an issue, I know how their service is. They come out right away. We have a good working relationship with them, so that one I am very familiar with. When we were, when we got notice that our Sioux Falls Networks was not gonna be doing business, we need to change IT, I asked Monte, our provider, I said, who would you recommend? And he actually said, you know, if you've got all your printers with A and B, he says, they're a good company, says it'd be a very easy transition, just so you'd have it all under one umbrella. A lot of times, you gotta have, you know, IT worked on either printers or copiers, along with your computers. So, he said it would make sense to do it, so that's just two cents worth in there, so. Like I said, that, I recommend it is, like I said, it's all gonna be a substantial cost.
One person, get it done, everything's taken care of.
And with them as well. And this price is not the printers. This is just.
No, no, that's a whole separate contract that we are.
But they did drop the price when you called them.
Yes, yes. So, they were, just like I put on my notes, they were, you know, gonna charge an onboarding fee, but since we already have a contract with them, they've dropped that. And then, they did drop their monthly fee as well, just 'cause of the partnership we already have with them, so I think they're, shown they're definitely willing to work with us, so.
Motion to approve a contract with A and B IT Solutions for IT services as presented.
Second.
At two seconds, so I got four.
I think Chris got me there.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Wassler.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
All in business.
Moving to effective assumption for economic development personnel.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.